Good evening and welcome to Scottsburg's Comic Council on this day of March the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, in the year of our Lord. We begin our city council meeting with our call orders, what we're doing now. Here we go, the prayer and pledge allegiance, if you all will mind a stand. I'll add a word of prayer, because I said the pledge of allegiance. Father, we come before you to vow this day to thank you for the day you've given unto us. It's, uh, life is going to be shortened now, Father, as we're into five o'clock in the evening, and we thank you for the pilgrimage of life you've given to all of us. Thank you, Father, for Scottsburg, thank you for America, thank you for Indiana. Father, thank you for these young folks who are with us this evening. Father, we pray your blessing upon you, Father, and that you have joy and peace throughout their days, Father. We thank you for our meeting tonight, give each councilman here wisdom, discernment, and understanding in all these things we do, and give those here wisdom and understanding in all that we do. Father, we love you, we praise you, and do so we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda is our roll call by our foot treasurer, Jan Harrell.
Here, Amy.
Here.
Tim Hall.
Here.
Rick Cozart.
Here.
Kevin Smallwood.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Mark Nicholson.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Harrell. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, and the February thirteenth executive session. Do you have a motion to accept those that's presented?
I make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motions, or a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rick Cozart. Any questions, comments? Bring them on, people, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous, passed. Thank you very much. Next thing we have on our agenda this evening is the public comment period. The public comment period is that is the City of Scottsburg City Council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their name. The marks should focus on issues not to be used to target city employees or likely individuals. Who would like to come forward tonight? All right, I'll leave. Okay, Gary, come on ahead.
Hey, Gary Bush.
Come on up here. Pretty please.
I have two questions.
One, Mrs. Gary Bush.
Yep.
Okay.
Have we got a drainage engineer in place?
We have a drainage engineer in place. The drainage engineer is a, uh, as for the City of Scottsburg, has not had an overall plan for, uh, our stormwater, but we have hired a company to do some, and they're working on that now.
Okay. My second question, I would like the east or the west drain on Terrell Street, goes across Terrell Street, to be looked at as far as it being needed to be raised, because as it goes into the normal flood zone dips that we have in south in town, that drain, as it comes across the ditch or the street, it is only eight inches from the bottom of the ditch. So, madam, we have a rain and that ditch gets full of water, then across the south side of Terrell Street, that water might get in the ditch, so then we have a pond for it. So, if that drain would be raised or where it could get in that ditch, it would be very helpful down there. So I just kinda like to see if it could be handled for them to look at, to see if we can have an adjustment.
I'm happy to contact that engineer, but I believe that's already been given.
Okay. Well, like I said, the east one is okay. The west one, it may need giving attention.
So, I don't know if I realized there was an east one. So is east one more down by your house?
Yep, right behind my house, and it is fifty-four inches off the bottom of the ditch.
I believe, I believe that was given to the engineer, so I'll, I'll check.
Because of the east one, they don't need to do anything there, it's okay.
Be great. Thank you so very much. Who else would like to come speak this evening? During that, going once, going twice, going thrice, we'll close the public comment period. We'll now go to new business. The first one left tonight is four H. Has anybody seen anybody from four H around here? Come forward, how, how are you, would like to listen?
Everybody's standing up.
My name is Savannah Watson.
Just make us a line. Why don't you guys just come up and make a line right in front of, right in front of Seaton Downs, so this will be fun, guys. Come on down, come on down. Just make a line all the way across here, guys. Let me make a line all the way across. Go all the way across, come on, so we can all see you all. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna start to the right down here for you. Would you please tell council your name and just go all the way down, first to last thing.
Mia Blais.
Brady Barnes.
I like carp.
Do you like carp?
Live car local.
Jerry.
Patty Stollins.
Kevan King.
Savannah Watson.
Paul Schott.
Carson Sarah.
Adrian O'Neal.
Rachel Fosso.
Abby.
There you go. Ladies and gentlemen, like, okay, now who wants to talk?
I'm the president of the Junior Leaders here, and we just wanted to come today and thank you guys for the money that you gave us last year, and we wanted to talk to you about how we were able to spend it and how the good it was doing in our club, so.
I'm sure.
I'm gonna start.
McKenna.
I can find her.
You get her first.
Hey, McKenna.
I'm third year in the four H camp, and the best thing I like about four H camp is that we can meet different counties that you don't normally actually see during a year county, and like all the things that we get to do there.
Well, did you, did you, did you raise an animal this year or something?
Yeah, I raised cows and...
No? Wow, so you had, you said cows, so you had two?
I had three.
You had three? Wow, you had a pack, wow. How was that pack?
It's, I actually, I didn't get it.
That's great, that's great, thank you. Who's next?
Hi, I'm Savannah Kim, and my favorite thing about four H camp is probably to meet new people and getting to make more friends.
Did you, did you come up with a bestie there?
Yeah.
No, that's good, that's good, that's great, that's great. So, Congresses, did you raise an animal?
Yes.
What did you raise?
I raised sheep. Sheep, alpaca, goat, rabbit, dork, chicken. I think that's all.
Wow, do you live on a farm?
Yes.
Wow, that's awesome, that's awesome, good job. Who's next?
I mean, we'll just start with you and then go down. Those two just have to leave early.
Okay. Uh, I'm Mia, I'm sophomore, and I was a counselor, and I will be a counselor for the four H camp this year. There are two others, but they're seniors and they weren't able to make it to them. And my favorite thing about camp is there's a section of it, while people are swimming, there's a land lover section, where everyone kinda gets to chill out, and they just, they don't like swimming, so they just go there, we do crafts, we do games, and it's so fun, and it's a great, like, socializing place for them.
Um, I'm Randy, I'm a sophomore at Scottsburg, and I didn't get to go to the, uh, camp, but I got to go up to Purdue for four H roundup for three days, and we got to learn about, like, our future careers and, like, all the bunches stuff. We'd met new people, and it's like for the whole state of Indiana.
How'd you like Purdue?
It was really nice, I've been up there three times now.
Was that a name, was that a future school for you?
Yes.
What about, did you stay in the swimming part, or did you stay in the land part?
Land part.
Well, that's great. What, what questions does this council have for these young folks? Oh, is everybody gonna go?
Yep.
Sorry about that, next. Sorry about that.
I, I ran in sixth grade, if I'm part of four H, would need to make new friends.
Awesome.
Hi, I'm Eli, I'm a freshman at Scottsburg. Uh, I've been to four H camp every year, this year I'll be a counselor. It's my favorite thing, to meet new people, it's that fun.
May I, Miss Ray?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm live car local, I'm a freshman at Scottsburg High School, and I've been at, to four H camp every single year except the COVID year, and I'm gonna be a camp counselor this year, and my favorite thing about four H camp is just meeting new people.
That's good, that's good. Where do, do you, how many, how many different cities come into this?
Ten, ten different counties.
Ten different counties, wow, wow.
Um, my name's Jerry Gertie, I'm a freshman at Scottsburg High School, and unfortunately, last year I didn't feel a visit, I was helping on the family farm, but years I did get to go, I had a lot of fun, got to meet new people in some counties, and got to do some activities then, and got to have some time with them, so it was pretty fun.
You know a guy that even talked with you? He's pretty good, yeah, there you go. How about you, hon?
Um, I'm Patty Stollins, and I've never been to four H camp, but I do geography and a cookie, so I'm a bad four H.
Oh, wow, that is awesome, that is awesome. Do you have a favorite picture you've taken?
No, not all of them.
There you go.
No, I'm Kevan King, and I've never been to four H camp, but I went on, over my trip, and learned about, uh, some shit like that.
Now, will you two go this year, this summer, to four H camp?
Uh, no, I don't remember.
So, that's awesome, that's awesome. You want?
Well, I'm Savannah Watson, um, and we used some of the money to help sponsor like curbs, and so I went on the Teens of Cedar Creek, and I learned about biosecurity and things like that, so I was gonna bring it back to the community, and for my horse club and about some of the dog people, because I used to be in that, so I was able to spread awareness of how to help take care of animals.
So you see the horse club as well, that's awesome. You do any barrel racing?
Uh, no, I do like the rainy and the ranch hour, but I do it at four ranches, it's fun.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
I'm going to Florida, um, I'm going to Florida to get some new food, and I'm not going to go to Florida, unless it's not for the...
Is what?
Snacks.
Snacks, that's my favorite part of it. Snacks are always great.
I'm July Short, been in four H for three years now, and, uh, I've been a camp, one of my favorite parts is meeting new people and then acting.
Did you make a best friend?
No.
There you go. That's okay, that's okay. Were you able to meet other people then, from other counties?
Uh, I think.
Sometimes it's kinda neat when people sit and say, oh, how do you do this? This is how we do it over here, that's kinda cool.
I'm Carson Sarah, I'm a midgraduate at Scottsburg Middle School, this will be my favorite place to camp. I think my favorite part is probably the people in the gauze.
The people what?
The people in gauze, they're crazy.
Gaga pit?
Gaga, gauze, they're...
Okay, so how's that going?
Like, take a volleyball, it's like this big pit, and you just get in there, you hit it and later you're out.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. Yeah, we know, so you have a sibling here as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. Did he watch out, did he watch out for you around? For sure, for sure.
My favorite part about four H camp is probably seeing, meeting new people, so...
Seeing new people, there you go. Did you meet any new people from other counties?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So did you take their numbers or write to them or anything? That's neat, that's awesome, that's great.
Mine is, I'm seventh grade at Scottsburg Middle School, and I've never been to camp, but my favorite part about four H is getting to show them new people.
That's awesome, that's awesome, that's, I hope you have a great time. It's a great time to get out and just see things and new experiences, it's so great, it's so great. Council, what questions do you have for this, folks?
The bodies, you guys, for you guys doing the community, opposite of by yourselves, fantastic.
When, when you say it was ten counties, that just in our district?
Yeah, in the South Camp, at least in the inner, ten counties came together at Country Lake Christian Retreat, and you guys gave us money last year, and we used, uh, probably ninety percent of the money for camp scholarships, because it's a really nice place to camp, but it's expensive, um, it's about two hundred dollars a kid, so we give a hundred dollar scholarships. We had over thirty campers, um, last year, it was a really big number for us, so we were, we were blessed to have your money, and we appreciate it very much.
How much money did we give you last year, hon?
Uh, I don't remember, it was two thousand and twenty-five hundred, but it was somewhere around there.
Okay. I think it was twenty-five hundred.
Well, then, okay.
I'm thinking.
Okay.
I would just like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna thank each and every one of you, because farming and raising animals is our American dream. We start without as farmers and stuff like that, and it's nice to see a good group of young people, different ages, trying to carry this on. So I am very proud of us, thank each and every one of you for being part of four H. And we know it's a good thing, and keep it up, because we need to eat.
And I would like to, I would like to say, uh, thank you all for your participation in the program, and I know that, uh, sometimes when you go to, I've had the privilege of working with a lot of people over the years that's been involved in four H, and a lot of what you're learning and, and things that you're doing is gonna carry on with you all through your life, so, uh, I want to commend you for, for putting that effort forth on that.
Mark, do you have anything you want to say?
Um, I don't know if I caught it, where's your camp at?
Um, it's in Underwood, at Country Lake Christian Retreat, so it's really close to us, so that's great for me, but we have, like, Orange County, um, Orange County, Floyd County, Washington County, Jackson County, so we all just kinda come together there, there's tennis.
Okay, well, thank you for all of you.
And thank you guys for supporting us.
That's, uh, that's, and guys, these are things you're gonna remember your whole life, going out and meeting new people and going to new places and being on your own, away from mom and dad, and just be with your friend, that's all kinda cool, it's part, part of growing up, so you're, you're on your way, you're on your way. Uh, is there, uh, is there another ask this year as well?
Yeah, I mean, we could, well, if you take anything, you had to give a camp, we need to use the camp scholarships again, it's only we use it for since, there's so many kids who like to go to camp, and it is expensive.
Well, council, what's the...
Jan, is that something that budget, or do you mean to make a motion to...
That's what I think we, I can look back to see, but I believe if we took it out, we have that money in our budget.
Okay. I thought that is our...
That's what we, that we have in your council budget, yes.
So we don't need a separate motion tonight, right?
It's not, just wanna show up now what you want to do, yeah.
Well, no, we'll definitely support it, that's not a, not a question at all, we'll...
You might do an email and...
Yeah, we'll make sure that...
So we need to pass something, that we're gonna vote to go ahead and, and fund four H like we did in the past year?
Is it, is it...
Counsel, this is legal, council.
I think Christian's point is it's already in the budget, so the amount, we need to figure out what the amount was, and then just confirm that at some point, if we want to do that tonight, we'll do that at the next meeting, but confirm it for minutes, I'll take the exact amount. We'll just, we'll regroup, we'll get the budget amount, and then, if we need to come back in.
I'll see how it's done in the past, I think we've given two years now, maybe?
Yeah.
Two, okay.
And we want to continue, we want to continue helping all these, all these people, so thank you so very much, and we applaud you. And... For coming and being part of our city council tonight.
Thanks, guys.
You do all the hard work. Screw yours, girl, listen to the very voice, please, your hands in the tree, yeah. Next thing our agenda is remaining, two, two, twenty twenty-four mayor, mayor of Boyd, board appointments, we had a few that were still on there, you'll see them highlighted in your packet, and we're just asking for motion to go ahead and go forward to mayor's appointees, the motion to pass and present is presented to... Yeah, that's what I said, not a motion to pass, it's presented. Jim, one last motion, break, break seconds, any questions, comments?
I just declared for the mayor, you had asked my wife to serve one, I think, to park sort of claim commission, so I'm staying from that, just to, to be clear, so I will not be heard.
Highly educated lady, she's, she'll be wonderful, she'll be wonderful. So we have one distinction due to consent of interest, uh, we have a motion, is there a, is there a second?
Yes.
Yeah, break second, okay, any, uh, all of you, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Next thing we add is the approval of the road closure for the railroad repair, and we have Ms. Jill Ritchie, who's gonna start on that list.
There's no wishes in favor, anyway.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That won't apply to me, it's fine. Margaret will be happy, they'll be upset.
Had too much of these here, so...
Um, you saw on your packet, I had a map for you, um, explaining, but, uh, Louisville and Indiana Railroad contracted out for repairs, uh, to weather permitting, uh, the work will take two full days for the road closure, West Lovers Lane between South Bond Street and North Main Street, uh, if approved tonight, the closure would begin at seven AM and end at six PM, um, on the twenty-fifth. They have contacted, uh, dispatch, um, they contacted the school, um, they've done quite everyone that they need to know about, except for your all.
When was the beginning on?
Sorry, the beginning is the twenty-fifth, at six AM, the ending would be six PM on the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Yes.
And that was, I'm sorry, was that Lovers Lane, I said?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, Lovers Lane is...
West Lovers Lane.
The track of Main Street.
This is the detour route you put on the...
Yes, they added the detour route, and they put signs out, um, for all of that.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
If approved, we'll put on something, yes.
Then you're fine, I understand, make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Motion approved by Christian Evans, seconded by Kevin, and is there any questions, comments about this? Bring them on, people, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, so, this is cool. Okay, next we have road closure for New Creations Ministries, car show. This is by Mr. Mr. Hoyen and Mr. Williams, welcome, welcome, welcome.
Well, as you know, we'll have our, we'd like to have our sixteenth annual car show on Square, uh, more than, let's make one south, uh, usually we get the east and the south side of the square closed off that day, and we would like to ask your permission to do that again.
Guys, this is, this is, uh, this is, uh, this is Todd, Hoyen, and this is Tim Williams.
We, uh, as usual, we will go around with all the businesses now that we will be there that day, if they choose to be open, they can do so on Memorial Day. Uh, last year, the, the city dropped off the combs for us, blocked off those roadways that worked out perfect, and then we just took the combs back over to them, and with Louisville Smith, uh, usually runs from nine to three, uh, weather permitting, uh, and then we always do is sweep through, making sure no trash and debris's up behind us as well, so, um, and then, New Creation, a nonprofit, uh, anybody that reaches out to us, it's a free service to that individual, uh, we've been, we exist since for thirteen years now, I think, yeah, so...
If you like old cars, this is a really great to come to, especially if you like back in the fifties, sixties, seventies, the muscle cars, that'll set you back in seat, I bet I ever did that, and, but, you know, uh, you'll see them all again. The, uh, and also, if you've never been to the New Creation dinner, when is it this year? Remember November?
I think it's the second probably in November of this year.
It's really great to go to, and this is New Creation, uh, how the Lord is turning people's lives all around, so, uh, do we have a motion to go forward with road closure for New Creations?
I'll make the motion.
Mark makes that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Tim, second, say. Any questions, comments? Bring them on, people, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you for all you guys do, folks.
God bless you throughout the year, so, appreciate it.
For sure, thank you, thank you. Next we have on our agenda, approval of the electric department job prescriptions, and basically, this is basically just, uh, uh, you know, there's, there's only slight changes, just to...
That's awesome.
We have a motion to go forward and approve the job descriptions, it's presented.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motions, or a second?
I'll second.
Kevin, second, is there a question, comments about this? Bring them on, people, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, next thing on our agenda is the approval of city employees about the Eclipse Watch at Mass Park. Now, who would have thought there would be any, there would be any hurrah about this? But there is, so Jill, would you bring us the hithers and the dots of everything that's gonna happen that day?
Well, Emily's better on everything that's gonna happen, but we are having an event at Mass Park, um, we've invited local vendors, um, to set up a tent if they would like to, um, we have had quite a bit of feedback on it so far, uh, but we would also as well like to ask that the employees for the city would be able to participate, and we do have classes for every one of the, all the city employees, we have classes. The Health Department has offered a specific amount of classes for the event for people that are coming in from out of town or local, um, but I would like to ask that if an employee would like to participate, that they are allowed to leave at two, uh, in case traffic is what they're saying it's gonna be, and not come back, uh, to their shift for that day of their day shift, like City Hall. If they're not gonna participate, then they need to stay at work, uh, is what I felt was fair, and it's not like a day off, you know, so we'd like them to come out and participate, but if not, then they, they need to stay at work the regular hours.
Do you think any employees will go out for that?
Yeah.
I think so, Jill.
If not, the mayor, checking that.
That's exactly right. Does anyone of you have thoughts on this?
Um, it's supposed to be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, we're on the path of totality, um, actually, we're like right in the cutoff zone, so we're hoping to attract some out-of-towners too, hopefully people from Clark County and even the local area will come down, um, our way and watch the eclipse. I've seen videos, and hopefully it's gonna be, um, really interesting, um, hopefully everyone is safe, and wears their protective eyewear, and hopefully have a good crowd at the event.
Just to let everybody know, this is in the green space that is just north of the Mid-American Science Park. All that green space up to the, up to the license branch is owned by the City of Scottsburg, so we are going to have our first, uh, what do we have, sixty-nine?
I wonder.
I already said, I don't know why you're looking at him, that's just not weird.
Our own, uh, what, what, what was that council we had, in the forest?
Not here, you mean New York?
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not. I hope not.
I did not approve of what...
I was probably hoping that it's...
It won't be news, but what it is, I mean, it's supposed to be, what is it, two minutes? Three or four?
Yeah, it's supposed to be about three minutes.
Three or four minutes?
Yeah, we're, we're, at about three minutes.
I often think of that when I hear that about go-bang, because it was dark for three hours, three hours, from noon to three o'clock, so, so anyways, we have a forecouncil today regarding what the eclipse is gonna be like, what is anticipated to be there, my understanding is all the motel rooms have been sold out all around us, not just in Scottsburg, but all around us, so this seems to be a big adjustment, I know, I got called by WDRB on forty-one, what we had, and Jill and Emerys has filled up all in, so we're gonna be there, I think, though, I'll be, Joe. So they're gonna be there, so come on out, get your picture taken, and, and enjoy the eclipse, so, uh, do we have a motion to go forward then and allow the city employees to, we work at two o'clock, and go out and be part of that as well?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, make some motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mark, second, say. Any questions, comments? Bring them on, people, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? We're, we're, unanimous there. Thank you very much. Okay, the next thing is the John Joan tax payment brought up to you by the wonderful Jan Hartman.
I just received this, um, this, the paperwork that they fill out every year to continue to get the abatement. To be honest, it is, should be getting close to being over in twenty-five to ten years. So, um, this is just, if you approve that, they would continue to get that. And like I say, it's not a very large abatement. It is listed on the annual report. But they're down to where there's not many years left on this.
Let's describe this, what, what that is. In other words, it's five and ten. Usually five years on the equipment inside the building, they're gonna tax payment on. Ten, you know, goes by twenty percent like that. But on the tenure, it goes to ten. So the first year they don't pay anything, the next year they pay ten percent of property tax, the next year twenty percent of property tax. So this is going to be the next to last year they get any type of tax payment. And that continues to go up, that tax amount they pay continues to go up every step of the year.
And the only amount that's abated is what they approved above. There are, they're paying the base amount no matter what. The abatement is on the improvements that was added. Uh, so the motion here would be, uh, that to find the property owner. There isn't substantial compliance. You can see there on the tabs there in the middle of section three and section four. Uh, what their estimated was when they came and sought it and they overshot almost all those categories. So I reviewed it. It does appear to be in substantial compliance to me.
Is the completion date, Jan, the one you're seeing on there, the two thirteen and fifteen, that would be February twenty-five?
That was, yes, that's probably been the, yeah, not probably, that would have been the year that it probably.
Come off.
Pay sixteen, but not being completed. Is that correct, Josh?
That, that's exactly what I was thinking as you were talking about. So.
If it was completed in fifteen, it's, it was completed in February, as they're anticipating.
And the base, what's the estimated start date, Jan?
About thirteen to fourteen, exactly, not at thirteen.
Yes, that's what would have begun. And that's where he built the new property.
They built the property.
And when Josh says the base, that's the land value. In other words, they're always gonna pay the land value. We've been dating the improvement, like the building and our equipment.
So you see there on yours, like it said, they, um, salaries as estimated, it was like estimated at ninety thousand. Now it's up to two point two million. Like Josh was saying, they, um, everything there has, has gone up. As far as what they had said they would do for the community and.
And we're thankful for a car here in Scottsburg. So.
Sure. I'll make a motion if it's presented.
Christian, Edwards makes the motion to go forward with the jump to a tax payment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mark seconded that. Any questions, comments?
For the minutes, it would be the property owners in substantial compliance. Is that, is that a motion?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Christian.
I had, it's.
I appreciate that.
For the minutes.
So, uh, we have a motion seconded. Are there any questions or comments about this? Here, now, let's see, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Thank you very much. On our announcements for this evening, um, do we have, they're reading, Christian, reading your email today. You want to talk about that this evening?
That, that was mainly just an update for, for council.
The spring, the spring deal?
Oh, the spring break conference. Yes. Yes, so basically, in years past, on council, um, dates of council meetings in which run into our school district spring break or fall break. We have typically moved, mainly, obviously, council members go on spring break, but it's obviously the public is on vacation the same week. We don't want to necessarily run into that. So I looked at April first, which would be the following Monday. The day after Easter, actually. Um, that would be open to move our council meeting originally scheduled on March twenty-fifth to April first. If anybody has objections to that or anything, so.
I mean, while we're sitting here just looking ahead, April eighth is also the council meeting. And that's the eclipse day. So maybe.
Maybe just have it the first, first and the fifteenth, or first and the twenty-second?
First and the twenty-second.
That one.
I mean, that, that would work for me, as long as that fits the council's schedule.
I think it's a good idea because we're going to Franklin. We're gonna leave after the city capital meeting. So I'd like to pass this, so we don't have to wait until the end of the winter. So, yes, I'll make a motion then, then we change again.
So, so what we're saying is April first and April twenty-second. So we would, de facto, basically moving the April, or sorry, we'd be moving the March twenty-fifth meeting to April first. And then the April eighth meeting to.
Just cancel.
Just cancel. Yeah, basically. So we would move on to the second.
Next would be skipping the last meeting here going to April first, moving out of the week and going to the twenty-second, way back to the week. So April one, April twenty-two, we have a motion to do so? Oh, right, right closer. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian, is that seconded? Any questions about this? Bring it on. Let's see, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Thank you very much. Now we have an announcement from Ms. Harding.
Uh, I sent council an email because four of you were not here last year at budget time. But at, um, last budget time, they approved a, a position in my office, which has not been filled for two years. They approved funding that for a deputy clerk pressure. So I just, um, I wanted to make you aware, it is not a new position being created. It is one that has been vacant. So I'm asking your approval to allow me to fill that position.
I think it's a good idea. If you have the money, you can go back and kind of enumerate it. I think we just make a motion and let Ken get who she needs in her office. They do good work and you need help. She doesn't need help.
Keep paying your ride. Keep those chairs going.
I'll make the motion, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Tim, seconded by Ken. So any other questions here? I hear you. All of you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Third and maybe most important is, we have a Scottsburg Warriors on Warpath. So, uh, you know, so Scottsburg Warriors, we didn't see them win handling, uh, Saturday's game. And now we're playing against Evansville, the Evansville team, this Saturday.
At noon.
At noon, at noon in Seymour, Indiana. And if we win that, we will be there at night.
Eight PM.
Eight PM.
To go for a chance to go to Indianapolis.
Chance to go to Indianapolis. Wow. And to go to Indianapolis, that's the final.
State championship.
That's your state championship. So the Warrior, the Warriors are looking toward the semi-state and the state right now. So what a great opportunity. Uh, if you haven't seen him, it's absolutely amazing. It's absolutely amazing. So, uh, Christian is part of the coaching team and just, they've just all done a great job. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Anything else for tonight? Nothing? Do we have a motion then? My question. Motion is made by Mark to drive the road.